All right, dear Lord, just thank you for the many blessings you've given to the town of Stallings. We just give you all the praise and glory. Tonight, I want to lift up a Stallings resident, Stuart Ramirez, who's over in Cary Greens. He's having triple bypass surgery tomorrow morning at 12 o'clock. And so just be with him, be with his family, be with the surgeons as they go about healing him and having your touch on him is what we're asking tonight for. Be with the council tonight as we go about do the town's business. Just give us all wisdom and courage to do what we feel is right. And we give you all the praise and glory, Jesus Christ's name and prayer, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in the midst of the liberty and justice of all.
No comment? No, okay. All righty. We got the consent agenda, I called a meeting order, we got the consent agenda there. The ARPA fifth quarter documents, amended budget for the Chestnut Roundabout, and a copy release. Did you want to make any comments on any of them, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, any questions?
Good to me. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right. Motion by David Scholl, second by Graham Hawes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, the agenda approval, does anybody have any additions or amendments? Can I get a motion then? Approve it as written?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor? Ayes have it, all righty. Kevin, you're up, resurfacing contract.
Evening, council. Here in front of you tonight to present our resurfacing contract and ultimately request council to choose one of two options. First option being approve the resurfacing contract as is or appropriate an additional $200,000 towards our roadway maintenance program. And the history behind that is that that $200,000 kind of stems back from the original FY 2024 budgetary discussions where we were really seeing the impacts of inflation at that time. And so council had a good discussion amongst yourselves and ultimately decided to fund $1.05 million for our resurfacing program. And that 450 of that is, 450,000 of that is Powell Bill with an additional $600,000 appropriation. And council wanted, decided upon that, understanding that our target budget is $1.25 million to keep our PCI value, our payment condition index, at 70 or above over the next 10 years. And that stems from our payment management software where essentially it says $1.25 million annually gets us to that council established 70 or above PCI value goal. So council decided to approve that $1.05 million budget. And then at this point in time, or later down the road, which is at this point in time now, look at the resurfacing costs, see if they eased up, if inflation has eased up a little bit, and then determine if they wanted to appropriate that additional $200,000. So I can go to as much detail as you'd like, but ultimately the request here tonight is to either appropriate that additional $200,000 or approve the contract, authorize Alex to approve the contract with Fred Clay Industries for about $730,000.
All right.
If you have any questions?
Any questions for Kevin there? But I think we did have some conversation about this, about the extra $200,000 that we might look, wait until the spring, see how the budget looked. And that was my only recollection. So David, you have a question?
Yes, but somebody else go, because it just.
It went away.
My question is, what was the budget?
Oh.
About $750,000.
$750,000, so it's less than the.
Correct, just under.
Since you've already got the bid in.
Yes.
If we decide to spend the extra 200, does that change the timing of the way things will get done?
Unfortunately, we would have to re-advertise, just to make sure our scope of work is accurate across the board there, so.
Delaying that, would that impact the timing and the seasonality of the work that needs to get done?
Yes, sir, it would. We would have to advertise for 10 days, 10 calendar days. And then I don't believe we'd be able to get that in front of council for approval until the November 27th meeting. So ultimately, we would miss this fall period for resurfacing. And we'd have to delay it until spring.
Your recommendation would be which?
I don't, preferably, I would prefer to take the additional $200,000. It gets us about a third of a mile additional. We are subject to market demand fluctuations and pricing, so there is a risk that these prices could go up. But even looking at the, because we bid two alternates, because we didn't really know how the pricing was going to look. But with more quantity, the price does go down. So I think losing, losing the fall for construction doesn't necessarily cause much of an impact, also get the road, the roads done, but.
Yeah, but our roads, some of those roads are not very good condition and we get enough complaints about that anyway.
Correct.
So the sooner we're on that, I think the better. If we want to go back into spring, as we had talked about, and do 200 more, we could do that, couldn't we?
We could, but I, my fear is that if we don't lump it in with this contract, that we would not get as reasonable pricing, I think. The smaller the contracts, the more you'll be, I don't want to say price gouge, but you know, prices will go up if the contracts are smaller, just because mobilization, just overall efficiency. Take it into consideration here.
Mayor Protim Scholl, you probably have a couple of options. One, you could, as Kevin pointed out, there's definitely an economy is a scale issue, right? It's obvious. And then also, moving forward after that, you'd have two options. One, you could put it towards preventative work. We're still, this is, I'd call it a pilot phase of our, a lot of our preventative maintenance programs. So I wouldn't want to add an extra $200,000 on top of the 250. What I would suggest would be maybe add it to the next fiscal year's contract and just add it on top of that. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? For you?
Oh, all the roads listed, that's in the link that we got. That's, so all the little plots, those are with the 750,000?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and I do like that list. It's not, we have a variety of neighborhoods affected getting some work done on it. So that's, I mean, it is what it is on the ranking, but glad it worked out that way. Any other questions, Graham?
Why, why did we bid out? And now we're asking. Out something and now we're asking. Hold off then.
It's a good question.
I'd be happy to answer that, Councilmember Hawes. I think when the board, probably a couple of years ago now, set a road maintenance resurfacing amount on their capital improvement program, it was set at $1.25 million. During the budget discussions last year for our current fiscal year, the board said, finances are tight right now. We don't know if we can afford to go up to that $1.25 million. So instead, we're going to put $1.05 million in the budget. But we want to see what the numbers come back as. Maybe at the time, we'll want to put in that additional $200,000. And so staff bid it out based on what was in the budget, but put a pin into that to remind the board of the conversation that y'all had when we had it. So that's why we're here.
So you'll ask the same thing? Assuming then he'll ask the same thing. Spring contract, I'm guessing, because we'll have $250,000 left from the rest of the budget here. I assume at that point, you'll ask us the same question, would you like to add the $200,000 optional money? And if you recall, the reason for the optional money was because, just like Mr. Parker says correctly, the prices could increase due to market demand. We also said prices may increase per unit because of the high inflation curve around. Does that make sense? So we'll finish out with the spring contract at $250,000, roughly, get it up to $1.5 million. But we still said maybe $200,000 if prices come down, we sense a lot of.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Is it, yep, I'm ready.
I'm in favor of option one, so I'll make a.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson on option one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scholl. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, that's unanimous, thank you, Kevin. All righty, 50th anniversary, Stephen.
And I know you handed me those things, except for now. Okay, so. I'll let you pull it up there.
The 50th anniversary is overall clear as 2025.
2025.
Right.
So I'll answer the big question there here in a minute. All right, so back in the spring, I mean, summer, I got to actually take a run through the Lionel headquarters, Lionel model trains that have been around for 100-plus years. They'll actually be celebrating their 125th anniversary. And I got to talk to several folks up there in their leadership. Some of them actually live in the area, very familiar with Stallings. And what triggered some of the conversations with them is I was wearing a name tag that actually said Stallings, North Carolina. And people were very familiar, got lots of compliments on the part. So I also got to talk with kind of the custom, the person that's over there, custom order unit. And a lot of the things that were in there were their, basically their anniversaries. This manufacturing company was so many years old. And I saw, hey, you know what? That might be a pretty cool heirloom for the town here in Stallings. I kind of associate a little bit of Stallings with Lionel because Mr. Baker, who many of you know, works with, worked for the town for many, many years, big Lionel train fan. But long story short, what I'm proposing is a kind of 50th anniversary, kind of merchandising memento for our 50th anniversary. Here are the kind of bullet points. There's a minimal order of 100 units. They're about $60 a unit. I think it's like $55 to $58, depending on a couple of little things. We don't have to pay any shipping costs since they're local. They said we could just go and pick them up at the factory. Delivery time, and this is probably the reason why I'm bringing it up right now, is eight to 10 months from the time that the art is approved. And that's going to be kind of why I'm here tonight, is that, can we advance that a little bit? And I'll kind of go into that a little bit more. So I kind of threw up these examples very, very quickly. So this is not meant to be kind of a final product or anything like that there, but just something so that people could see. So the top there has three pieces of art. So the right-hand side's one piece of art, left-hand side's one piece of art. And then what goes on the door is a third piece of art. And then kind of the bottom there is just kind of an example of another company that was celebrating an anniversary and kind of just see what it looks like. They come in windowed boxes and things like that there. And again, the reason why I'm bringing it here tonight is from the time that you get your art finalized through their department, it takes about eight to 10 months for turnaround time. And since we don't have any art currently created for our 50th anniversary, the reason why I'd be here tonight is that if it's something that you guys wanted to move forward for, is that we would effectively be asking to kind of put upfront $6,000 in to start the process. And in that, I kind of brought this up at the Parks and Rec meeting and kind of letting the Parks and Rec Committee kind of lead the effort for developing the art and then bringing in maybe the historical committee to kind of work with them, to kind of come up with the art. And maybe they could present art, you know, at the first of the year so that we could present it to them and get it approved and get it submitted. So that's basically it in a nutshell. That's basically it, is that we would have to agree to commit 6,000 upfront. And then we would actually sell them that cost as part of our 50th anniversary celebration, which would be about, again, $60 a unit. And then the other piece of it would be to have Parks and Rec and the historical committee work together to come up with some art over the next two to three months.
If they happen to tell you, let's say we ordered 100, but the demand was more, would it be another eight to 10 months after that, or could they just increase production?
It, no, the way that works is that, believe it or not, Lionel's factory in China actually makes NASCAR products six months of the year and train products six months of the year. So it really has more to do with, they order a certain amount of product from the factory and then they do all the customization in-house in Concord. And then, so it's really more that, what the factory can produce. So, but to answer your question, that it's, I was given the impression that it, we give them a number and they produce that number. And then beyond that, it would be another contract to produce more.
Okay, got you.
Given that we're local, maybe we might be able to work a deal. Like I said, they seem pretty, pretty open to making money.
When you say local, where, I've never, I've heard of a train company somewhere in the world. Where are they?
They're in Concord, right across from the racetrack.
So they're not local to us? Well, they're not.
They're not in town.
They're not a Stallings town.
No.
Business. I'm kind of confused of why a boxcar and what's the significance of?
It's just a memento. It's just something that, I mean, museums do it. I mean, that have nothing to do with trains or anything. It's just something that.
I just, I don't know very many train people. I would, this is outside of my wheelhouse.
It's okay.
Maybe the question is, Steve, have you done any research on?
I have not. I don't even. Sell 10 and have 90? Yeah. That's possibility, that is possibility.
And I agree.
Or have a hundred.
First say this, I think it's fantastic that you've got an idea.
And it's not really.
It's a no connection.
Yeah, it's more of a memento.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. If you're going to do a memento, that's, well, never mind. I was thinking, and then you tied it in with the NASCAR. I'm like, well, that's a heck of a lot more. Rather have a car.
Okay.
Model than I, but then again, we're not, I don't, it's not a Stallings thing, so I don't know.
Like I said, I got to talking to some of their executives. It was chit chat.
They were good salespeople.
I thought I would bring it.
Here's what I do. Doesn't scare me in the sense that our celebration is mid to late 2025. Not sold on the idea, but in the absence of other ideas. I'd ask the manager to tell us now or later what the Park and Rec Committee charge. What are they doing, what are their ideas?
I did run it through them. They thought it was an interesting idea.
Yeah, that's likely because you're council members.
I mean, that, yeah, I mean, that's okay too.
I have ideas all the time and they always will say, that's a great idea.
No, they didn't, they said interesting. There's a difference.
Yeah.
Well, you also mentioned to run it to the historical committee.
Now, what I do like is the idea that maybe we don't know, maybe a boxcar is not the end result, but maybe having some artwork or something specific to commemorate our 150th and maybe that part gets started now. And then we figure out what the, what it's going to go on to later. Not much later, but maybe it's not a boxcar, maybe it's, I don't know.
Because we, on the historical committee, you got some creative people.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I just think that also, one of the things you do have to think about is that some of this stuff, if you're wanting to do something, want it to happen in 2025, you do probably need to think about it like pretty soon, or it's not going to be made in 2025.
On the internal planning process, Ms. Nichols and Ms. Donley have been working on that and planning, I think, in the spring to bring y'all something. It's a bit separate from the memento. I'd say it's more kind of the event planning, if you will, stage of that. But we have been working on it internally and plan to bring y'all something. Ms. Nichols, anything you wanted to add to that?
I just want to add, if we would include things like a logo for the event, what types of products we would recommend that logo be on. Heading in that direction, not, not products as expensive as this, but we were thinking of a logo that would be townwide, used for the whole year, used on all the products. Our logo, you know, that mimics our logo now, but it would obviously be a nod.
Well, that'd be my record, please take it to Park and Rec and Historical and start the process of designing what it'd look like, like Aaron's already just talked about.
Yes, sir. So Eunice and I have talked about several activities that we can get the community involved and the children involved, from logo design to art contest, a big gamut. So that's why we were going to bring you a lot of different things in the spring.
Great, very cool. All right, all right, thank you, Stephen.
No problem.
Thank you, Alex.
Yes.
All right, well, since you're up there, Stallings Fire Department request.
All right. So this is very simple, just as a refresher, Stallings Fire Department is interested in building a new location at Matthews and Indian Trail Road in Stallings. And just, is anybody here from the Stallings Fire Department? I wanted to recognize them, if they were, okay. You recall back in the, about a year ago now, maybe a little less, the Stallings Fire Department had approached the town and said, hey, would you be willing to make a monetary contribution to support the fire department in Stallings? They were thinking ARPA funds, just trying to feel us out. And I believe the number that was thrown out was a million dollars, if I recall. The board at the time said, hey, you know, we value the fire department. We're not, we don't think financially we can do that right now, but we're willing to consider other means of contributing towards the fire department. And one of the things that was suggested would be fees, zoning fees, that kind of thing. And so I think in line with that, the fire department has come back now and said, made a formal request to have the town waive all our zoning fees. Just do this. Thank you. All right. And so you've seen the request. And thank you to Aaron and Ms. Nichols and Mr. Shong for getting this together. The total fees, you're looking at about $9,000 to $10,000. The biggest source of cost there would be just kind of planner reviews of fees, the actual thick design packets, having our engineers and permitting staff review those. So we did take the liberty of creating some spreadsheets for y'all. Thank you, Ms. Bosnack, as well as. So one of the questions I anticipated receiving tonight was, well, how does that affect our budget? What does that mean? And what you can see is we budget for about $50,000 this year. You can see we're kind of trending down in what we're budgeting for our developmental fees just because we think the economy is kind of lukewarm right now in some ways. It's probably a multi-day conversation about the status of the economy. But you can see we've gotten more conservative over the years than what we budgeted for. And the main reason for that is zoning fees are kind of sporadic. They're based on kind of market demand, our micro projects, and just when these developers are coming to us and having their plans ready. So it's a bit random too at the same time. But, so it's hard to predict, but at the same time, we use five-year trends to try to forecast it. And what we're showing is about 83% is what the trend data is showing for this year. So obviously, we're looking $9,000, $10,000. It wouldn't make or break the town either way. And while it'd be nice to have $10,000, it would make us meet our budget revenue. It's likely something the town, it wouldn't make a big difference in the budget and the whole, so.
So the 41, 475 doesn't include the 10 grand that we would get?
That's just based on trend data, so, yes, sir. Right now, we've got about $16,000 we've taken in thus far this year.
This Stallings Fire Department, it's a volunteer fire department. Help me understand what that is. Typically are, I don't know how, do you know much about how it operates? Will it ever be an official department, fire department?
Sure. There are no plans to merge it into being an official town department. Of course, always open to conversations about ways we can kind of better service the community. But that hasn't been a discussion. I think what you're seeing is what a lot of high-growth areas have seen, where you've got rural areas, which historically have been volunteer fire departments. And as growth happens, the volunteers are just doing a great job, but it can be very demanding to run a area that's high-growth and have it staffed just by volunteers. And so you're starting to see in Union County a transition where they are starting to be half-full-time staff. And so after talking with Chief Porter on numerous occasions about this issue, I anticipate them continuing to progress towards having more and more full-time employees just because the demand is there. You know, the community has grown so much in the past 20, 30 years, it just kind of necessitates that. Did that answer your question? I mean, I don't know.
This may seem silly, but do they, do they have a fire truck? And does it have?
No, it has their name on it. They're not filleted with the town at all. You know where they're located, right?
On.
Indian Trail.
Morgan Mill, or Mill Grove Road, right?
No, that's going to be rude.
That's going to be rude, yeah.
This one's.
This is where we vote at Indian Trail. Across from La Unica.
Yeah, about two town.
Well, the truck, the trucks in Stallings, and the ones at Stallings Fire Department has Stallings written on it, but it doesn't say the town.
It's not town of at all.
But everybody sees it and thinks, associates.
That's a minor point, I was curious.
Yeah, they're associated with the town, but my point is, you know, we have two fire departments and Stallings is this second or third biggest town in Union County and we don't have a fire station in our town, so. I'd love to have one. I don't know what size it's going to be, but whatever it is, it's going to be improving in service.
Definitely.
The concern I had with Alex today was when, you know, they would pay us with tax money. You know, they're not going out doing fundraisers, selling base money for this. So it's tax money that we've already paid based on the.
Fire fees.
Fire fees, so. But it is in kind, you know, it's not dollars, you know. But they would be paying us with tax money, so.
So they collect tax revenues, they'd be paying us?
Right.
That's right.
But like I said, it is in kind time. And, but it is valuable to have it in our town. I'd love to have one on the north side of 74, but I'll take what we can get. They've had this land for a long time, so. About two cents. Any comments, discussion? Any comments, discussion?
So, uh, they, they are right on the land?
Correct, yeah, they, they, the mayor's correct. They had owned, uh, some property right at the corner of Stallings Road and Matthews and Indian Trail. They recently sold it or in the process of selling it. They purchased some property, uh, on Matthews and Indian Trail Road, just down the road in Stallings.
So if they just sit on it and do not pay like 10,000 dollars?
Correct, yes. If they don't do anything, um, you can see up here, depending on the type of re-zoning they would have to go through, they would save on, you know, up to a thousand dollars, anywhere from 500 to, um, a thousand dollars. But really, the bulk of those fees is gonna be the development review fees. So if they didn't build anything, it wouldn't cost us any staff time and so it'd be kind of a wash from that portion of it.
Is there any sort of, are the insurance benefit, fire department there?
Sure, absolutely. So a couple of things, because I, I dealt with this pretty extensively in Wade'sburg. We had our own town fire department. And we tried very hard and ultimately were successful in lowering the ISO rating, which is the state insurance fire rating. The lower you get, the better it is. It means that basically the fire coverage is better in that area. And it oftentimes coincides with decreasing insurance premiums for businesses and, uh, and residents. So obviously, if you look at a map and you see all the fire department locations, there's a hole right in the middle of town and there's a hole where the mayor pointed out, probably on the northern end of town as well. There could be fire departments there to speed up. Now, just from a common sense, life safety, service standpoint, having reduced fire response times is a good thing. If you can get quicker to the fire, it's better. At the same time, and that's one of the factors that go into those ISO ratings, but it's an insurance calculation. And my experience has been, all of it isn't completely transparent. I don't mean that it's hiding things, it's just, it was difficult for us to say, hey, if you do X, Y, and Z, then you're guaranteed to get an insurance rate reduction. Because it's complicated, there's a lot of things that go into the formula. And also, at the same time, um, every, every insured party isn't the same. So, um, I think that there's a good chance that it will help reduce cost, but there's not a guarantee, if that makes sense.
Curious with the sewer situation, I mean, this, I guess, is there an exemption from service?
It's a good question, uh, Councilmember Ayers. I haven't had that conversation. I would imagine there, there would have to be a way to get a fire department there, no matter what. I would also think that a fire department, like, who wouldn't use that much sewer? And perhaps there'd have to be some consideration of, you know, some sort of septic or something that, until public sewer was available.
Where, and the other, the other side of this coin is, you know, 10,000 dollars. This, this investment's, the building's gonna be multimillion dollars. So what does 10,000 dollars save them? I mean, uh, office out of it or something, I don't know. But it's just sort of, to me, it's a goodwill gesture.
Yeah.
In kind, doesn't cost us anything but time. I say that, but it's a lot of review on, I'm sure on the documents.
Mayor, I'm curious to, to ask you about this. I've been told that in the past, the Stallings Fire Department was in Stallings at one time and then they moved to Indian Trail. Do you know the history behind that at all?
No, that was...
Does anybody know that?
All right.
Do you know, Aaron?
It was before my time, but, um, I felt they were always there.
Hmm.
You know, now whether, you know, they were barely somewhere else for a little bit.
I, I don't...
Okay.
As far as I know, that, you know...
They were...
We could ask, we could ask Richard Baker.
When, when I moved here, they were, they were in the building right beside Athens Pizza, right beside of Athens Pizza.
Oh.
That's right. They weren't there. But it was small and it didn't accommodate their growth.
When was that, Stephen?
I mean...
The 80s.
Yeah.
No, no, it, it had to be in the, I mean, it was in the...
I was a kid, they were right there when I was a kid.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, they moved since I've been here in Stallings, so. But it was early, so it was probably around the year 2000, somewhere in there.
Okay.
In 2004, they were already moved though, because that's when we bought an Indian Trail.
But I mean, like, that building that's beside there, I mean, where the windows are is where the doors were. So, I mean, they basically just took the doors out and slapped some glass and...
Are now too, they had, they added on to it.
And then they expanded the parking lot a few years later and added the building that, that Athens Pizza's in.
All right.
All righty, uh, any further discussion, questions? That's the pleasure of the council.
Take a motion that we waive the planning department fees at a cap of 10,000 dollars for the Stallings Fire Department.
A second. All right, motion by Mr. Shaw to support spending 10,000 dollars on waiving zoning and planning fees. A second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, that's unanimous, all right. Well, there we go.
Just because Sean put his coat on, I think we should stay here for 10 more minutes.
Sean.
Max put his coat on.
Max.
Max.
You, you said you put your coat on, that's why you...
No, I thought you were getting ready to leave.
All righty, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, I like hanging out.
Oh, Ms. Drake?
I'll second.
Ms. Groom, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, all right, thank y'all.
We did our business for the night. That was our contribution.